Good evening, everyone. Welcome. It is Tuesday, August 1st, 2023. It is now 7:05. And we are meeting, it's the special meeting of the Dudley Charlton Regional School Committee. We are gonna, I'm calling the meeting to order and we are gonna rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States, America, and to the Republic. Under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice. And we will take a moment of silence. Okay, thank you. We're gonna move on to the consent agenda items. We have four items. There are approval of the warrant, vouchers 109, 114, and 1,000 for FY24. We have the regular meeting of June 14th, June 28th, July 5th, July 19th. We have approval of the executive session of June 14th, July 5th, and approval of the school committee workshop on June 27th. Does anyone have any need to take anything out of the consent agenda items?
Jean does. Jean does.
Okay, Jean, what do you want to take out?
I'd like to take out the minutes of Wednesday, June 14th.
Would that be the executive session as well?
Uh, no, just the regular minutes.
Okay, and we want to table those for the next time?
Sure.
Okay, alright, so, um, does anyone else have anything that they want to take out? Okay, so I'd entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda items as listed, except for the June 14th regular meeting minutes. So moved by Caitlin. Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
I can second.
Love this. Everybody, the first one I heard was Maureen Chikering. Okay. Um, because we are on video, um, I will call names and just reply ayes. You might want to just take yourselves off of mute for a minute. Um, Kelly Zella.
Hi.
Jean Castello. Caitlin Pansik.
Aye.
Maureen Chikering.
Aye.
Jamie DeLovo.
Aye.
Okay, who else do I have?
Yourself.
Oh, and me. Aye, thank you. Okay, motion passes. Um, we're at communications. Does any member?
Yes. I think Nicole sent a message that she had to dial in, so she's got no camera. Do you see a phone number there that you don't recognize?
Yes, it's a 508 number that ends in 532.
Uh, probably.
There's another iPhone coming in right now.
7532, yes, that's, that's Nicole. Great. Just so you know.
So Nicole is gonna be here.
Yep.
Okay. Great. Um, okay, moving on to communications. Does any members have communications? Um, Superintendent Lamarche?
I'm Madam Chair at School Committee. Uh, as you're aware, I did send out an email yesterday regarding a summer reading selection for 5th grade at Dudley Middle School. Um, it is, um, from my perspective, um, as my communication that stated and shared, uh, that the book minimally should have had a disclaimer, uh, so that when parents, uh, wanted to select their book, that they would have at least known that there were at least two passages in there that were of coming-of-age topics that they may not have been prepared for their child, uh, to read. Um, it is with apology, uh, that I share with you in the, uh, school community that that book was on our summer reading list. We will certainly, uh, work as a team, uh, with Principal Monet and Principal Rich on our, um, how we develop our summer reading lists and, um, you know, the books that we select. Obviously, the ideal situation is for teachers who have read those books, uh, to, to recommend them, um, but not knowing exactly how they were selected this particular year with the, um, uh, departure of our middle school leaders. Um, I, I know we at least have a plan going forward, but once again, I apologize to you as a committee and to the community, uh, that there were at least two passages of coming-of-age that parents may not have been prepared to, um, have their students read with them or, um, as a, uh, school summer reading recommendation. So I just wanted to pass that on, uh, through communications.
Great, thank you. Um, I also see, received communications about a 7th grade book, which I did forward to Ms., um, Principal Rich as well. So I'm sure he will be putting that in his list as well.
Yeah, I just want to add something on to that. Is that we have a perfect opportunity right now with two new middle school principals to really ensure about vertical and horizontal alignment. And I think also one of the things that kind of put a snag into this was, um, the link to be able to find more information, at least on the Charlton Middle School side, was a dead link, uh, that would normally have that type of information, at least it did last year when it came through email and it seemed, and I remember clicking on it before and seeing that for my own kids. So, uh, but I think with that principal leaving and IT shutting off his email, et cetera, you know, that it became a dead link, so anybody looking now wouldn't be able to find that information. So I was just thinking that'd be a really good idea to just have where it's, there's, there's a point place and not a point person for this information. So that way it's always there, always accessible.
Madam Chair?
Yes, go ahead.
I, I appreciate, uh, remember Castello's mention of a link at Charlton Middle School, but I want to be crystal clear. This book was not recommended in Charlton. I just want to be crystal clear. So I just don't want anyone to be confused that this, they were looking for a link to determine whether this book was uh, appropriate through Charlton Middle School website because it was not recommended at Charlton Middle School. This was a Dudley Middle School recommended title.
No, sorry, I should have clarified. I was talking about the 7th grade specific book over at Charlton Middle School.
Thank you. Does anyone else have anything they want to share? Okay. Moving on to public comment, do we have any, um, people in the audience that wish to make a comment? Superintendent Lamarche, do you see any hands raised or anything like that?
I do not.
Okay. Okay, um, we'll move on to new business. Um, first order of new business is the update of the fiscal year 2024, and that's the Dudley Special Town Meeting. I, I turn it over to Superintendent Lamarche and, um, and Mr. Matthew.
Uh, Madam Chair in School Committee, um, we did attend the, as, as members of the school committee did as well. Uh, the, uh, special town meeting that was held on July, I'm sorry, all my days are sandwiched. Um, Monday, July 24th, I believe. Um, we did attend that meeting. Uh, it was actually a lengthy meeting, uh, for, uh, basically one article. And at the end of the day, an amendment was passed, um, by the voters of the town. It was well-attended, very well-attended for a special town meeting in summer. Um, an amendment was passed and within that amendment, there were two contingent budgets in there, both of which had the, uh, requested, the adjusted requested school assessment by this regional school committee, uh, that was, uh, determined on June 12th, um, 2023, June 14th, 2023. Um, and we really appreciate that the voters, um, uh, putting that forward. We also know the selectmen, uh, the Board of Selectmen and the FAA put forward a article that also had the school district assessment in it, uh, adjusted according to the school committee on the June 14th meeting. So we appreciate the all-around support, uh, regarding, uh, the school's assessment, uh, moving forward. Um, a couple of things, uh, from there, once again, our appreciation of the town voters because it was, uh, largely passed. The amendment was an 84% passage, um, uh, for that school assessment within those two contingent budgets. There is still some, uh, lagging, uh, clarity as to whether the amendment will stand up over time or not. Uh, we don't have the, um, even though we've been doing as much research as we can as a regional school district, we don't have the ultimate clarity on that. That's, that will be required by the town. Uh, so that's why we continue to, uh, move forward in a cautious, conservative manner, uh, regarding our budget, because until we have that clarity, there were some questions raised about the dual contingency budgets. There were some questions raised about, um, balanced budgets. Uh, there were some questions raised, uh, about, uh, value allocation, uh, for departments. Um, but what is clear through all of that work is that the school assessment is within that, those two contingent budgets. I don't think that that provides a final answer for us as a school district, as I've mentioned, uh, as, as to why we are still being conservative in our approach, um, and cautious. Um, I think the telltale, um, uh, item right now in front of us that will really be confirming for us, uh, would be the, uh, ballot on August 17th. Uh, this will be the first time that the five questions are completely separated, uh, for, uh, the town voters to select. Uh, if they vote, if there was a positive vote for the schools, I think that that is confirming and that lifts the conservative cautious approach in many, many ways. It still may not, uh, provide the clarity, uh, that is required from the special town meeting. Um, you know, I think the walkaway as a, um, a, a person who attended that meeting and the information that was provided is that the schools are in a good position, but I think that communications after the fact and research on our own doesn't necessarily lend itself to pure clarity on that. Um, so I, I apologize to the, the voters of the town of Dudley that, you know, we may not have the exact clarity we need, uh, to move forward, even though our school assessment as requested by the Dudley Charlton Regional School District from July, June 14th, um, is in there. Um, uh, we really appreciate it and we just appreciate your patience with us on, um, you know, getting to the August 17th vote with, with certainty. Um, I think is, is kind of the position, uh, that we are in as the district office for the Dudley Charlton Regional School District. With that said, we would still recommend to you as a committee to, uh, to, to discuss B, a special district-wide meeting, but I just, right now, we're on A, just covering the update from the special town meeting. And I'll turn it over to, um, Mr. Matthew or anyone else who would like to, to share their thinking and thoughts based off of the, um, special town meeting held by the town of Dudley.
Thanks Superintendent Lamarche. Um, ye- yeah, we're in an unfortunate position where, you know, a week after the special town meeting, uh, where it still is not 100% absolutely clear that an legal appropriation occurred in the amendment. And until we have that appropriation, even if the August 17th vote is positive, if somehow that amended vote, uh, that occurred last Monday were deemed illegal, we don't have that appropriation. And without the, both the appropriation and the revenue, we don't have a solidified budget. So, so that's the question that is still before us. Uh, as Superintendent Lamarche indicated, we have reached out to DESI and we've received information that, you, you know, we're not out of the 112th budget, uh, regardless of anything until August 17th, 18th. Um, we did receive some clarity, uh, about what may happen in the future once a budget, uh, is, uh, resolved and approved, uh, through town meeting and through DOR, uh, through their lawyer of the day service, um, and through our local DOR rep, who is also the town of Dudley's DOR rep. Uh, there was, uh, an indication that, uh, all of this is, is really a local, uh, issue, uh, up to local officials and uh, local legal counsel to, uh, resolve the uh, amendment as, as voted by the voters. So, you know, until we have absolute clarity, I, unfortunately, I think the only path forward is to, um, at least have the conversations about the district-wide meeting.
Thank you. Does anyone else have anything they wish to add about the town meeting? Um, I will say, as a resident of Dudley, I was very appreciative of the work that, um, John Breer, or Brer, I always say it wrong and I apologize for that, did on behalf of, of all the citizens. I think that he really did a lot of homework trying to find the right path for us and to make sure that our services weren't decimated in the meantime and, um, you know, that's certainly not anything that I, as a school committee member, want and I'm sure none of you want. And I just appreciate all the efforts that he put in and I know that he, even prior to that meeting, had requested from the town, um, for their town council to look at the amendment. Anyone else? Okay. Um, so why don't we move on to part B, um, special district-wide meeting? If anyone want to start, Superintendent Lamarche, you want to start us off on that?
I'm Madam Chair, uh, thank you, and School Committee. I've been working, uh, hard, uh, on this, just like Rich, trying to figure this out because, uh, as I indicated a while ago, um, I have not been through a, a special district-wide meeting nor a 112th budget, um, a- as well. Uh, we have been in touch with numerous people, uh, colleagues, departments, um, and we are doing everything we can to put our ducks in a row if school committee takes this decision. What I would do is I would definitely, again, without the clarity and with the pending certainty of August 17th, um, I, as a superintendent, I would recommend that the school committee schedule a special district-wide meeting after August 17th. Um, in the event that there is, that certainty is not available on August, after August 17th ballot, as required. We know that, and we heard loud and clear at the Dudley, Town of Dudley Special Town Meeting, that there was every attempt to avoid uh, this, the scheduling of this or the need for this, um, again, with the, uh, even a, 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 a small sliver of uncertainty based off of the, um, uh, special town meeting amendment, I would still move forward with scheduling this. And the reason why is because there's a lot of work around organizing this. This isn't something that you can just, after, on August 18th, just say, okay, now let's schedule it, because then you're looking at the month of September, uh, for holding it. So because of the amount of the timelines, the amount of effort and work around this, uh, the, uh, acquisition of legal counsel, uh, and who has experience with a special district-wide meeting, um, I just, we would recommend, uh, that there be action tonight, uh, to schedule this. With the hopes, and again, the hopes was actually a word that was used in special town meeting is, and not too favorable, uh, but with the idea that August 17th will provide certainty and not require, uh, a follow-through with this. Uh, but again, we would, as a, uh, as district administration, we would recommend scheduling this. Um, and we would recommend scheduling it for August 23rd, Wednesday, August 23rd, to provide, um, the right timelines and the right, uh, communication paths for, um, legal counsel and postings and all the requirements associated with writing the article for this particular meeting.
Okay.
I'll make a motion. I was just gonna say, I'll make a motion if that's what you're looking for.
How about I read a motion? I'll entertain a motion and if you approve, you can move it.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. So I'd entertain a motion to schedule a special district-wide meeting for Wednesday, August 23rd at 7:00 PM on the Shepherd Hill Football Field. And the meeting would only be postponed for the following day at 7:00 PM due to emergency weather conditions.
So, so moved.
Okay. Jean, was that a second? Okay, so second by Jean Castello, moved by Kelly Zella.
Yeah, keep in, uh, excuse me, Madam Chair, sorry to interrupt.
Yes.
Mine, this requires a two-thirds vote for this to occur.
Agreed. Agreed. Okay.
I'm gonna make, are you gonna read the?
This meeting is being recorded.
Sorry, got it.
That's okay. Good evening, everyone. I'm sorry for the delay. We had a, um, an unfortunate tech issue with, with the invitee. Um, so we are gonna go back to where we read the, um, the motion for the special district-wide meeting and I'm gonna entertain a motion to schedule a special district-wide meeting for Wednesday, August 23rd at 7:00 PM at the Shepherd Hill Football Field. This meeting would only be postponed for the following day, Thursday, August 24th at 7:00 PM at the Shepherd Hill Football Field due to emergency weather conditions.
So moved.
Thank you. So moved by Kelly Zella. And second by Jean Castello. Okay. We can start discussion on this. Kelly, you, um, were the first one to move it, so if you'd like to start.
Well, that's fine. Um, I'd like to see us get out of the 112th budget as soon as we can, so if this is, you know, the step we need to take to move forward and get things, uh, squared away for the first of the year, I think this is what we need to to do as a backup anyways. Hopefully it doesn't get to that, but, um, if it does, so be it. Uh, the people have to say. Um, I am curious, though, if there's any chance of moving it to a location in Charlton, given that, any thought? Or if it would need to be in Dudley, but.
Um, I think, yes, go ahead.
It doesn't need to be in Dudley. That's just Shepherd Hill, which is our largest site, uh, for that.
It just seems like. Go ahead.
It's the only place that, uh, we're not sure who would attend or how many would attend. Uh, so minimally, you do have the bleachers, uh, for the football field. If, uh, maybe I'm not aware of a similar s- spot in Charlton.
I could only think of probably Bay Path. That is, and I only suggest that because I know, uh, a lot of people in Charlton were hoping that it could be in Charlton since, uh, considering the circumstance.
So we think Maynard Field, but the parking would be atrocious. So I mean, and I understand what you're saying, Kelly, but I think Shepherd Hill has the, the space and the capacity for it.
Yeah.
I think it also has.
Turn it out there.
Yeah. Um, Steve, correct me if I'm wrong, we have the ability to have audio as well for that large, for that large space, too?
Yes, there's a PA system for the football field.
Okay. Okay. Um, anyone else wish to have some conversation about this? Yes, Ms. Castello?
I, I agree that we need to, we need to at least put it on the books and have it and get ready and follow the, the rest along with the two weeks prior and, you know, ensure that we're, we're definitely dotting our i's and crossing our t's, but, you know, and, and I appreciate what Dudley did, but it's true, we still need the appropriation and the revenue. You know, we can't budget and move forward on what if and what may happen. And, uh, you know, I concur that having the 112th budget, I want to be out of it. I want to ensure that we're gonna start this school year as best as we possibly can and, you know, it's true, like, anybody can limp through a 1/12th of the summer, but as soon as school starts happening, it's, it's just not a, not a good scene for the staff and students and the outcomes for the district.
Right. Anyone else? Um, I would just say from, from a, just being at the Dudley meeting, like, it definitely, I mean, I think the Dudley voters that came understood the importance of this. And, you know, typically a town meeting may get 100 to 200 people. We had over 400 people. So that was very impressive. Um, and, and I think, you know, this is not where we want to be. I don't want to be calling this meeting. Um, but the day after this, our special town meeting, we have the town administrator writing a pup, a press release about the fact that it's just unclear and we, and that we should be calling this meeting. So I, I feel like our hands are tied at this point. I hope that August 17th is, is what happens and the residents are able to come through and, and I think they will, and I think they're gonna fund the school and fund the town. Um, and then we won't have to worry about this meeting at all. Caitlin, go ahead.
The only, I mean, I think this is the right thing to do. I don't agree with it, but, um, it's something we have to do, but my, my issue is if the ballot fails on August 17th and we force this on Dudley, we are shooting ourselves in the foot for FY25. Because we are going to close the library and have to repay that loan. And that's gonna destroy our budget potential for FY25, so I hope people keep that in mind if it gets to the district-wide meeting because we're basically forcing this assessment on the town and therefore costing them a lot more than our assessment. So I hope people show up and, and vote at the ballot, but again, I'm only one vote. People can decide how they want. Yeah, there were 400 people there. That seems like they would vote yes, but there was 900 people the first time and it wasn't enough. So I don't know.
Right.
I just, I hope people realize what we're doing for next year's, and we, we don't get out of being under the state's eye until we have FY25 resolved, I believe. So. I mean, we get out of the 112th budget, but we have to have FY25 balanced, correct?
Talking about Dudley or are you talking about DCRSD?
DCRSD. I think.
If we're able to get this and it's before December 1st, we have, we're, we're fine. We don't have to worry about that. The only time we'd have to worry about FY25 is if by December 1st, we don't have a greater pro- appropriation and revenue. And then we'd have to already be approved and have that appropriation of revenue by F, for FY25 and then the state backs off.
Hold on one minute. Steve, that's the same person, I think.
It is not.
Okay, thank God. Okay. I'm, I apologize. Go ahead.
Okay. But even still, if, if we push this budget on Dudley, if we fail at the ballot, we have no hope for FY25 and we will have to cut much more than we potentially cut this year, so.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think it's really important to remember, we're not asking for anything over level, level funding, level of services. We're asking level, over-level funding, but under-level services at this point. And even still, you know, while we cut 200,000, we still may have, we, we're not gonna get as many students coming, school choicing into our district. We're gonna have to pay for people leaving our district at this point.
At this point.
We need to be careful of where we are and, and I hope that the residents of Dudley want a good system for their students and, and I think they do. Um, and I'm hoping that, that we see that on August 17th.
Since I'm not, I've just, since I'm not from Dudley and I don't get the Webster Times or anything, has there been any information put out through Dudley, factual information about what just happened and next steps kind of that anybody has seen?
Not in the Webster Times.
No, is that the only local paper?
Yes.
The town of Dudley is pretty much only putting it on their Town of Dudley Facebook page.
Okay. Is this something we should be putting information out about or?
Letting it sit. I mean, I don't know.
Well, it hasn't worked the past two times, letting it sit. I mean, I, I don't know how best to get the information out. We've certainly, we've tried videos, we've, I don't know, I don't know how many letters to the editor. I tried to put a letter to the editor and it didn't go in. Um, you know, we can certainly try again.
But there was no, oh, go ahead.
I'm not sure what we're asking here. What information are we trying to share?
I, just to guess about where the school budget falls, um, and the situation.
I sent, I sent something out last week.
I mean, to people who, like voters who aren't in the school, like, that we don't have email. I mean, I guess Dudley voters, Charlton voters are in a different situation, so I guess I'm just wanting to make sure that everybody who's, doesn't have a, uh, an email with the district is getting information from the town or the school somehow of the importance of the next steps of that August meeting.
Uh, yeah, respectfully, I'm not clear on the political action that you're asking to, to the town voters from us, other than writing an editorial.
Go ahead, Jean.
Just information, I guess.
All right, Kelly, I think you're, I think you're, you have a good point because, you know, statistically speaking, it's one of the things that we talked about with, uh, MASCE. Is that when you're, when you're doing like the DCRSD at all, you're getting maybe 20% of your actual catchment voting area, you know. So I think you want to work on something to catch up to that 80%, right?
Correct.
Part of the school system that, you know, it may have aged or younger kids and they're not, you know, they're not there, right? Um, I think the problem that comes with that is that that's going more political and we're the elected officials at school committee and they're the administration. So if we were gonna really kind of push something like that, I think that's more things that we have to come together as a, as a committee and, and put that out, either individually on, on it or together and, and kind of blink at the area in different way.
Yeah, respectfully, the information that I send out is very factual. It doesn't say anything because I, I, because you're, you're It doesn't say anything because I, I, because you're, you're. Basically referencing political action and and. As I've shared before, the school committee is the political arm of the district. Administration is not.
So do we want to have? You know, in order to be able to have this in. For, let's see. You know, it would have to be in by the following, by next Monday. I think to meet the deadline of any, if anyone wants to write a letter to the editor.
Okay. By like this Monday?
This Monday coming up because it, it's like a week out. Right? Because then, because by next Friday, it's too late. Like they, they publish on Thursdays or Fridays, so you want it in the following. Like the tenth, eleventh.
I, I think that's Friday the eleventh. I, I, I think when, when in doubt, I think by Tuesday of. Of a week is is the drop dead deadline for a. Possible entry on a Thursday, Friday edition. It does come out on Thursday. So I think, I think Tuesday, best bet is Monday. So that would be the seventh. That's your best bet to submit something on the seventh, but I would also, i- if I ma- Madam Chair, i- if I may. Um, and I apologize if how this sounds, but. I I would say that the, whatever's written has to be written by the school committee as a whole. I don't think a Charlton school committee member entering something for the Dudley voters. From what I've heard at town meeting and et cetera. Um, will be well received. I even know that my entries. We're getting to a point of, um, you know, people telling me to stop writing. Uh, because I am a hired superintendent. Um, so I just, I respectfully, I think the. Um, school committee should submit something as a school committee, um, not as individual members. If if I could be so bold to say so.
I wholeheartedly agree, this is Nicole and. Um, I was going to go further with that in in addition to letter to the editor. Could we also as a school committee post something on the Dudley? Town. Um, Facebook. And kind of or mimic. Not mimic, excuse me, or indicate, you know, we're putting something in the Webster Times, uh, you know, for delivery Friday, et cetera. Um, again. Mr. Lamar is coming from. Um, your avenue and your emails, it is only hitting, as both Jean and Kelly said, it is only hitting. The school district, it's not hitting the rest of the town voters that are not involved in the schools anymore. Um, so. Just like I said, piggybacking off of Jean and Kelly, I'm. Fully on board with their suggestions of. Getting something out to the entire public of both towns, not just the school district.
Okay, so. Jean, go, go ahead, Jean, I see your hand.
All right, thanks. Um, I think it's a really great topic and we should probably discuss it later and find ways that we can, we can do that. Uh, but in the meeting and in the, in the moment right now, we have an actionable item. Front of the horse, so I'd really like to move the question.
Agreed, okay. Let's go. Okay, um, so let's go to a vote. Um, we, I'm going to read off and have you. Say yes or no. So remember, this is a, it needs to pass with a two thirds vote. I'll read the question again. Um, this is a motion to schedule a special district wide town meeting for a district wide meeting. For Wednesday, August twenty third at seven P M at the Shepherd Hills. Football field. Um, and this meeting would only be postponed for the following day, um, August twenty fourth. At seven P M due to emergency weather conditions. So I will go through. Um, Kelly Zella.
Yes.
Jean Costello.
Yes.
Maureen Chikering.
Yes.
Jamie Delovo.
Yes.
Nicole Enberg.
Yes.
Caitlin Pansik.
Yes.
And Kathy Carmignani, yes. Okay, so that, that was passed unanimously. Okay, um, so to further our conversation about. Um, how we get. Information to the public. About, um, the, are you saying how do we get information to the public about the meeting or how do we get? Because that's going to be two different things. We also need to get information public about the importance of August seventeenth. In Dudley, is that what, that, is that what we're looking for first and foremost?
Because I can't wave my hand, I will indicate that, yes, I'm looking for. The information to get out to. Both towns, not just the school district. For the August seventeenth meeting. For voters to come out and vote yes.
Okay, so the August seventeenth is just for the Dudley residents to come out for the override vote.
Yeah.
And if, and if that passes, then we don't need to have the district wide meeting. That's a definite. Okay, so. Do you, you feel that that information needs to go to both? Towns?
Uh, I do. I know that can cause. Possibly some unrest. But again, those who are not. Involved with the school district, I mean, children, families, et cetera. Um, they may not know the extent. Of how impactful the situation is.
Okay.
But I can be.
I'm sorry.
I can be swayed. No, no, I can be swayed.
Well, right now, Nicole, I don't want you to be swayed.
Yeah, no. Um, I think it would be important to give, you know, we probably only have one shot to do it. Right? Like, so it might be important to give all the information, like. What happens if there's a special town meeting? What happens if there's? You know. Why we would need the special town meeting and then what would happen then, but also like. How important it is for Dudley to first vote yes? Do people agree with that?
Yes.
Okay. Um, so Jean, I guess I just need a little bit of help with. Logistics of that and and like, I don't want to violate any open meeting laws by. Creating a letter among seven people.
I don't think it would if it's, if it's informa- informational, we're not debating on an actionable item. For school committee, like it's, you know, I mean. Informational, isn't Steve. Isn't informa- like something that would be informational, like a shared letter to write out if we're, you know, I don't, I don't think. Or do we need a workshop for that to be able to kind of come up? I don't think so.
To be honest with you, um, I'm not. Uh, I'm going to play the not certainty card, but I I do believe that you can create a word document, you can all edit it as long as you're not debating in there, creating notes. And therefore you have a record of it. You're just editing a letter that you want to, you know, you're taking the, the position that you want to write a joint letter. Uh, to the, for distribution. I think you can take, I think you can put that, set that up on a, again, um, a Google. Google Doc. Um, and just maintain the record of the editing that was done. And so therefore you don't have any, you can prove that there was no deliberation. Um, in there for, uh, actionable items by the school committee.
Okay. So does anyone want to take? The first, like a first, um, do we have any good writers in the group that feel that they want to take a first stab at it and? And create the body of the letter and then we can go through and start looking at it?
I wish that was me, but it's not, and I'm going to be honest, I will be gone all weekend. I mean, I can check and read through, but. Um, I'm, I won't be back until Sunday night and I leave Thursday morning, so. My time is kind of limited with that, so I'd hate to start that. I'll be able to finish.
Nope, honesty is good, Jean.
I'm okay with it.
Okay, I mean, I can also start, I can kind of work. In tandem as well. So. Okay.
Madam Chair, again, the key is not, you're not deliberate, you're not look, you're not discussing actionable items by the school committee. That's a form of deliberation, that's what you're not doing. It's just your communication, you communicated our information that you worked on this evening.
So do we just, just as a point of clarity, do we need to? Have a motion to agree? To. Put in a letter? For the whole school committee? Or no? We're okay just to have it be?
I think, I think consensus works.
Okay. All right, that's fine.
Uh, I'm, this is Nicole, I'm sorry for just asking clarification, Mr. Lamar. You just indicated that the letter is going to. Um, be around this meeting tonight. Um, if that's the case, what I was looking for, and I think others were, but again, I'll speak for myself. Is the brevity of the budget not being. Um, passed, which would include all of the staff that we've already cut, the support. The music program, the library, the school libraries. Um, the special ed, et cetera, et cetera. I just want to make sure that that's what this letter is going to include.
Again, that's not me, that's the, that's the writers, but that's all factual information, yes.
Okay, I just want to make sure because that's. That's where I think needs to get the point across. Those items because I feel since we've gone back and forth with the town meeting. Um, the, the actual budget cuts of the school. Again, my opinion, it's kind of gone by the wayside and the other, um, you know. Entities of the town meetings have, have definitely had more, um, you know, prominent discussions.
Yes, I, I think, Nicole, I think you're right. I think I keep reminding people that we have cut. Um, incorrect if I'm wrong, it's like over twenty one jobs at this point. Twenty one positions, correct? Steve?
Yeah, twenty one positions, still sports, I mean, yeah, uh, and if, if I, again, could be so bold, I, I feel bad. But I disagree, the town of Dudley has put the schools front and center. In their contingency budgets and the selectmen's recommended budget. So the other departments may be getting more airtime on their reductions because the schools will put out front. And so. The importance of the vote is, yes, it's, it's still critical for us, but I I slightly disagree that the schools aren't. Our messaging has been this very consistent all along. Um, one could argue that the messaging from the town to between departments and the votes and et cetera. Has had some inconsistencies to it, but ours has been exactly the same. And and again, I want to respect and appreciate that the voters of the town of Dudley. For putting the schools forward in both contingency budgets as well as separating it out in the ballot.
Agreed. Agreed. Okay. Um, so if we can have, if we can try to get this done. By the meeting, by like. Monday afternoon. Um, I was going to try to go to the selectman meeting on Monday. Um, perhaps it's something that I can read in. To, at their meeting, so it's on video as well. As well as putting it into the paper.
Sounds like a good idea if you think you can get it. Done by then. I don't think it could hurt, that's for sure.
Okay, I mean, I'd rather have it done sooner rather than later. Um, I think what we'll do is when we feel like. We have enough for you to look at. I mean, we'll, oh, obviously we'll open the document to everyone. Um, but when we feel like it's enough of a document to really start looking at and. Um, making any changes. We'll, we'll send a text out to everyone to let them know that. Okay. Okay, um, and just as a reminder too, um, if we do have to go to a district wide meeting. Um. You know. Just so parents understand. You are more than welcome to bring your kids to this meeting. We don't want to hold anyone back. It's going to be outside the football field. Bring your kids. Um, please bring your own chair and bring some bug spray and, um, an umbrella in case of light rain. Okay. Um, is there anything, do we have to, do we have to? I'm sorry, Nicole, go ahead.
I do have a question. Um, the seven o'clock dark time. Yes, it gets dark at eight thirty, but me too. We can consider. Moving it back a little.
Um, we've already gone through the motion. So we'd have to reconsider the motion at this point. Um, I think we kept the seven o'clock time because it was. A time when we knew parents would be done with dinner. Um. And that's our normal time of school committee. I don't know if, if you want to. To motion to reconsider. You can do that.
What else to say, it's only. I mean, Nicole, it's only one item. It's only one thing that we can vote on.
Right.
Okay.
Okay. Um, so Nicole, you don't want to. Ask for a motion. Okay.
I'm off it. Just thinking of the amount, the turnout. And, you know, if anyone. Are we allowing anyone to speak?
Yes, go ahead, Superintendent Lamar.
Madam Chair and School Committee, we are working through the logistics of that, uh, just to be clear. Um, uh, to try to add, um, some familiarity with it, you have to think of it as like a town meeting. The only exception that we're learning so far is it's really the school committee's meeting. Uh, but there are some efforts that are going to be involved with both boards of selectmen. There has to be a selection of a moderator. Um, and it's really an article, you're putting forward an article for a vote. On the article. Um, the school committee, uh, will actually establish with the moderator the parameters of the meeting. And their expectations. Um, and we're, we're still working on clarity of that because we need it. And again, we haven't been through this experience and we've been. Um. We've spent the, uh, hours upon hours with. Desi, D O R. Attorneys. And the, the like to try to figure this out. But that's the best I can give you today.
So again. We are able to cancel this meeting. If August seventeenth passes. Or we. We are deter- like how, what is the other way to do it is if. We. The town receives legal. Notification that. That we are receiving the appropriation. I just want to make sure people understand.
Madam Chair and School Committee, again, the August seventeenth is with certainty. That the money will come, otherwise we need clarity in where that will come from. It has to come from the town. When it will come, don't know.
Okay. Okay. All right. Um.
The other thing is, it's like you might want to preface that it's, you know, eight seventeen, question five, that makes it certain. I know that it's just.
Yep.
Yep.
Yep, the, the question that has the schools in it, question number five.
Okay. Okay. Um, is there any other conversation you want to have? In regards to special district meeting or anything under update fiscal year two thousand. Twenty four.
Uh, Madam Chair, if I could, uh, School Committee, uh, as I said, we're approaching this cautiously and conservatively. Right now, we are still, uh, with disclaimers. We are still trying to move forward with. Um, student activities, uh, that's student sports. Um, so we are in, in band, we started up, uh, a, at least one practice. Um, this week, uh, we are trying to move, but it's conservative and it's all with disclaimer that it could change. Um, we want to be, obviously continue to be optimistic. We are not going back to rehire. Uh, which is the big, largest portion of this, um, override amount for us. Um, but we are, the principals are working on parallel plans. One where we are now, which is still a level funded budget. And one if we do have, uh, if we have confirmation. Of the support of the town of Dudley voters, uh, to move forward with a, as close to level services budget. Um, based off of the new, uh, um, vote and assessment by the school committee on June fourteenth. Uh, so the principals are, um, are still in a level of unrest and we're hard work. Uh, to, to run two parallel plans. Um, and we are taking a very conservative approach, uh, to. Items that if we do get a favorable vote. Um, in favorable support for our assessment of the town of Dudley, that we don't put ourselves in jeopardy or behind. Uh, moving forward, no matter what, we're already behind. But we are trying to identify items that we could probably strategically work on. And, um. Uh, have decisions later. So the example I'll give you regarding having J V sports as an example. If we do not get support. On August seventeenth and we do not have clarity. On the assessment to the district. Um, we will, and I'm, I'm going to come right out and say right now, we will look to reduce sports even further. Later in the year because of the expenditure, uh, that we're putting forward now. That's worst case scenario, but again, we're working on parallel plans, which we've been doing for a very long time.
Okay. I think too, we need to go back. I know Nicole had mentioned before about. Um, you know, having. um, you know, having fees for middle school sports and things like that. I think we need to bring those discussions back um, to make sure that we think about that ahead, you know, in the next budget, because I, I do think we need to start thinking about defraying other costs. So.
Yep.
I will be on ten percent, yes, for future budgets.
Yeah, absolutely. Okay. Um, do we have, uh, Superintendent Lamarche, we do have a need to go into executive session?
Yeah, so I'm going to create a breakout room.
Okay. Um, so I'd entertain a motion to move to executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining. And that's the Massachusetts Nurses Association or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body. And the chair so declares only to reconvene in regular session to take votes if necessary and adjourn. Wait a second.
Second.
Okay. Um, so we will go through Kelly Zella.
Yep, yes.
Jean Costello.
Yes.
Maureen Chikering.
Yes.
Jamie DeLovo.
Yes.
Nicole Enberg.
Yes.
Caitlin Pansik.
Yes.
And Kathy Carminiani, yes. Okay, we're going to enter into executive session and that is going to be in a breakout room, so.
This meeting is being recorded.
Great, and we are resuming back from executive session. Um, we have one final order of business to take and that is um to entertain a motion. I'd actually like Superintendent Lamarche to word the motion, how he believes it needs to be worded.
Hey, just one second.
Thank you.
I'm at home. Sorry, I, I can't. I was trying to look through email for it, but I, I know I sent it.
Would it have been in the tidbits?
Yeah, but I've, I've sent out a couple.
It was on a seven twenty eight one.
Sorry, I found it. Um, uh, the motion I would recommend is that the uh Dudley Children Regional School Committee um agrees with, agrees and endorses the side letter of agreement uh for Article twenty four reduction in force uh with the M N A Association.
Do we have someone to move that?
Yep, so moved.
So move Zella, second. Caitlin Pansik, second. Okay, is there any discussion, further discussion? No, okay, um, see no for, see no further discussion, I'll move to a vote and we are still on roll call votes, sorry. Um, so same order, uh, Kelly Zella?
Yes.
Jean Costello?
Yes.
Maureen Chikering?
Yes.
Jamie DeLovo?
Yes.
Nicole Enberg?
Yeah.
Caitlin Pansik?
Yes.
And Kathy Carminiani, yes. Okay, we have any further orders of business before we move? Okay, um, before we move to adjourn, I just want to say, I really appreciate. I'm getting a lot of feedback. Um, I just appreciate this. I really appreciate the school committee's time. Um, I know many of you are on vacation and our administrators have been on vacation and I appreciate you taking the time to come to this meeting. This was a very important one. Um, and it was great that we were all here, so I really do appreciate that. Thank you. Um, so with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Let's make a motion to adjourn.
Great. Second.
Yep.
Thank you, Pansik is second. All right, um, I will read the roll call. Kelly Zella?
Yes.
Jean Costello?
Yes.
Maureen Chikering?
Yes.
Jamie DeLovo?
Yes.
Nicole Enberg?
Yes.
Caitlin Pansik?
Yes.
Kathy Carminiani, yes. Thank you, everyone. Have a good.